It's called order.
I wasn't ready.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Ms. Hogan.
Present.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
She was up there.
Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Duroff.
Present.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Can you have mute her, Mr. South? Do you have the capability?
Mrs. Scott. Mrs. Scott, present.
Yes, I'm sorry, I had trouble getting through. I am, yes.
All present.
Pledge of Alleges.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Previous executive session, there was none, so we're gonna go to public comment period number one. Barb Furman, you're up.
Barb Furman, New Hanover. I am a proud product of public education and private college before the tuitions got out of control. Proud public school parent, proud retired public educator, and love this community. Always loving my neighbor and acting with common sense and mutual respect. Feeling like I am stuck on a candid camera set because in the last three years, decisions about our children's education have defied common sense at times. Some policies have been proven destructive and unhealthy. Children need consistency, structure, and less confusion, not more. So if half-days mean 20 to 25-minute classes at the secondary level, there is little valuable time for learning. If they mean half of your classes at full, then the child misses some classes for several days. Kindergarten students get barely an hour of learning time. Around holidays, this is party time. Fourteen half-days seems excessive, and twenty is more than 10% of the school year. The state may count these days as full days, but we know that they are much less productive. Please check school districts with higher test scores than ours in Bucks, Berks, and Montgomery County. Check our test scores before this trend of double digits of half-days and let us know how and if this improves learning. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can look to successful other successful school districts. How many half-days in higher-performing districts? How has SEL improved student behavior, a third of the goals of learning outcomes, understanding that some of these in-service additions will be SEL-related? Are behaviors and student focus on learning getting better? Let's take a closer look at half-days and their value for children and families. Families will also be affected. Again, let's discuss the pros and cons. Thank you.
Krista Collins.
Good evening. Krista Collins, Washington Township. I wanted to address the calendar, which is on the agenda for tonight. As to the start date, I'm hopeful that we will discuss the results of the poll that was sent out to the community. I don't know if that's been discussed or if it was shared, but I think that's important and hopefully the board will weigh what the community wants as far as the parents go, as far as the start date. But really, I wanted to talk about the early dismissal days that are proposed for the 23-24 calendar. I think it's really concerning, and I don't know why we have 20 half-days on the calendar. I don't know if somebody can answer that. I don't know if it's part of an existing contractual agreement that we're trying to honor. I would think that it's not, since this year there's 14, so I don't know why it's going from 14 to 20. But to put that into perspective, that's an entire month's worth of half-days, okay? I don't, as a working professional, get a month's worth of vacation time. I don't know how many of you do. I don't know how many in the community do. But there's also a really high number of two-income families in this district, unless that's changed, and I'm not aware, but I'm pretty sure that's still the status quo. How are these parents going to arrange either time off from work, get family to take them? With the cost of inflation, how are they going to arrange for aftercare? I mean, it's an entire month's worth of half-days, to put that into perspective. And I know that a lot of people in the community have raised questions about that. I had previously emailed the board about the number of half-days that other districts have. The most I could find was 10, which I still think is a lot. But we are two to four times as many half-days as other communities surrounding us. So that's really concerning. And also, we talk a lot about lower-income families in this district and how we try to help them. This does not help low-income families. They don't have the same benefits, the same time off, vacation days, personal days, that people of higher incomes typically do, or the means to arrange for childcare. So if we look at our income ratios and how that affects lower-income families, it's like we're saying out of one side of our mouth, we want to help them, but then we're saying out of the other side of the mouth, figure out what to do with your kids. Some people might be forced to let their young children be at home alone for a few hours. I mean, that's also a safety concern. Also, the PSSA scores. Third graders in math went from 9.5% below basic to 26.4% from 2019 to 2022. Eighth graders went from 19% below basic to 44% in 2021, and now it's 34% in 2022, so that's rebounded. Also, the kids with IEPs and 504s are not testing well in the district, and those are the kids that are already disadvantaged. So all of these kids would greatly benefit from being in school during those half-days, and I know my time's up, and not being dismissed early. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Donnie Savage.
Good evening. Tonight, you're taking your first action on the 2023-24 budget. And as a taxpayer and a community member who believes that high-quality school districts are key to a strong community, I hope to see the board is making decisions about the budget based on real data. Let me provide you a few examples of how you might continue to improve year over year on this process. Last year, several board members asked for five-year projections. The board president told me that he had them, but that they were not ready for the rest of the board. I'm not sure if you ever got them, but you did not get them prior to approving the budget. So when you get them this year, please be sure you understand the assumptions that went into the projections and understand the sensitivity of those assumptions. Make sure you're making decisions to support the success of our district, not just this year, but years into the future. Secondly, last year, several board members also asked for the data to support the assertion that higher tax increases correlate to lower tax collection rate. Again, you did not receive this information until after the budget was approved. I also obtained it via a right-to-know request. And upon plotting and running a statistical analysis on the data points, it was very clear that there was no correlation. So please insist on being provided the data and assumptions to back up what you're hearing. And at the last meeting, it was stated that upon initial analysis, the district could not qualify for the exceptions above the Act 1 index. This may very well be true. However, in my experience, BASD could always qualify for special education exceptions due to the spiraling costs of outside placements, as well as the increased need for special education. At the last meeting, you heard that more than 22% of our students qualify for special ed services. And I wonder how that has changed over five to 10 years and what impact that has on the budget. So please ask questions. So I look forward to witnessing the board's hard work to ensure that we are budgeting to maintain the quality of education that this community expects from Boyer Town. Thank you.
Approval meeting minutes.
Hogan moves.
Nyman seconds.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott. Mrs. Scott? Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
I got Mrs. Scott then. Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You nervous?
Me too. It's all good, okay?
All right, so tonight, I am so proud to introduce Jenna Rivenberg to all of you. Jenna is an 11th grader at BASH who participates in BCTC's horticultural program. I'm kicking off tonight's spotlight with a picture of Jenna. So I'm not sure she knows I have this picture, but this picture captures what I know about Jenna so far, okay? We met last Thursday during fifth period at the high school in the library. Jenna came in, we introduced ourselves, and I said to her, "How do you feel about being in a room full of adults?"
Scared.
Actually, she got really quiet, and her response to me that day was, "Better than a room full of kids." Great starting point. So then we said, I asked, "Do you want me to talk, or do you want to talk?" And you said...
I would be okay to talk. It's just very hard because I'm socially awkward.
So, I love this. Honest, open, straightforward, and smashing through her fears with me here tonight. So, I need you to know how proud I am before we start, and I'm sure I'm gonna tell you 10 times again before we're over, okay? So, she is joining us tonight as a first-place award winner at the Ole Fair and third-place winner at the PA Farm Show, where she competed as a BCTC Future Farmers of America student in the floral arrangement competition. So, that's from the Ole Fair. I'm gonna ask you to go one more time for me. So, December 13th, the board visited BCTC East Campus. And one of the places, we took a tour of the building. In addition to having a fabulous dinner, one of the things we did was take a tour of the building. And we visited their horticultural area. Their program offers students an opportunity to pursue a career interest in any one or a combination of the major areas of horticulture. Turf grass establishment and maintenance, landscape design, construction and maintenance, greenhouse crop production, and floral design. In addition, all students in their program, their horticulture program, become members of FFA and have an opportunity to benefit from leadership activities and competition. The floral design includes the study of floral shop practices, fresh silk and dried floral ranging, holiday and special occasion designs, wedding design work, house plant care, and trends in the floral industry. In addition, students also create seasonal floral arrangements for customers. So I'm gonna ask you to move one more time for me. This is her PA Farm Show design, which came in third place at the PA Farm Show. So, that smile says it all. One of the things that struck me when we were talking last Thursday is we're talking about something that's gonna happen in a couple of minutes, but she's like, "I need a place to keep my flowers cool and happy."
And I put in my entrance way, and they're very happy, and here they are, and they're going to go to one of you.
Yeah, so I have a question to start, then we'll open it up to the board, okay? So why did you pick BCTC Horticulture?
I've always been drawn to plants. Up till now, I've always had a connection with plants and nature. I like to hunt and scavenge for different berries, mints, and four-leaf clovers.
Very cool. So I'm gonna open it up to you guys. Do you guys have any questions for Jenna before we move along? Mr. Zawada.
Jenna, I have 70 acres that I lease to a farmer. Do you want to come this summer and show him how to do it?
Maybe, I don't know. You'll see, maybe.
Yeah.
Ms. Nyman.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
My son also went up to Burke's Career for Horticulture. So, it's a hard course. It's not easy.
It is very hard.
What is your favorite part up there?
I really like the environment in the greenhouse. I really like working there and dealing with all the plants and learning about how they grow and the systems and the environments and all the pathways that I can go when I grow up.
Ms. Duroff.
What are your plans after high school?
I would like to go to college. I'd like to have an internship at Longwood Gardens. I would like to work at the Ole Hemp Farm, and I have a lot of options that I could go.
That's fantastic. You certainly got good goals.
Hi Jenna. Were you surprised when you won at the farm show?
Yes, Ole Fair was, wait, sorry.
That's okay.
Was I surprised? I was very surprised. I didn't know that I would do that well. It was just like the first arrangement of the year, and they were like, "Okay, it's time to do this," and I just stepped right in it, and I did it.
Well, seeing your arrangement, I'm not surprised that you won because it was exceptional. And I have children your age, and I always tell them when they're afraid, that's the time to reach because that's where all the growth is. So, congratulations. You're exceptional. Thank you for coming, and thank you for reaching.
You're welcome.
So, Jenna might have given away a little bit of a surprise. Last Thursday, when I met with Jenna, we talked about the fact that tonight is part of, is our board recognition celebration. January is Board Recognition Month, School Board Recognition Month. And as part of our thank you to all of you for all of the work you do for the students of Boyertown Area School District, I asked Jenna if she would consider doing an arrangement for me. So we're gonna have a little fun in just a moment. The arrangement is at the front of the room. And I have to tell you, I love her answer. Usually when I talk to kids, it's that whole adult thing, "Yes, yes ma'am, yes." And Jenna looked me straight in the face and said, "I need to think about it. Can you send me an email with my options and I'll get back to you tomorrow?" And I absolutely love that because she felt comfortable enough with me, us being together for five minutes, to say, "I'm not gonna answer you right on the spot." So, yesterday, Jenna's sister and her dad stopped by, and I handed her a bunch of fresh flowers and a vase and said, "Have fun." So she did just that. There are slips of paper with your names on them at your seats. I'm gonna ask you to fold them in half, and I'm gonna have Jenna come around and collect your slips. You can go right through them. We'll do it in the middle. And by the way, check out her boots. If they are not joyful too, I don't know what is. I'm gonna shake them up. All right, I'm gonna shake them up. I'm gonna let you pick so I stay out of trouble.
Mr. Panarello?
Panarello. Yeah! Somebody's wife is going to be very happy when he gets home. So that's awesome. Listen to me, don't walk away yet, because now's the part where I get to gush. You just crushed it in front of a room full of adults, like seriously crushed it. I am so proud of you. I am so happy to have met you. I cannot wait to come to your shop and buy flowers from you.
I'm probably gonna go in Longwood Gardens and grow up in there.
Do you know who was at Longwood Gardens today? Evan was at Longwood Gardens today. That's where he came from before he got here. So, but I am so grateful that you said yes, and I am so grateful that you decided to stay. So hang on, I have an introduction to do, and then we're gonna head out the door, okay? So, I have the pleasure of also introducing some BASH students who are here tonight to celebrate all of you from Mr. Valak's class at the high school. So, thanks for your time. Guys, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and we're gonna sneak through.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. As you know, January is School Director Recognition Month, and we are here tonight to say thank you to our board members. I am Eve Falegi.
I'm Oludapo Farahunse.
And a quality public education is a key that can open many doors of opportunity for students, providing that education takes a team of committed people from educators and staff to parents and administrators. The members of your local board are an important part of this team, making informed decisions that direct the course of our public schools. Every January, we take the time to celebrate and recognize this challenge and vital work that they do on behalf of our students, families, and community.
As a token of our appreciation, we present these paper towel holders. These paper towel holders were made in Mr. Valak's Advanced Materials Engineering class and his Tech R&amp;D class. These paper towel holders were made with a SolidWorks design, transferred into a spire, and then we used our CNC that was provided to us, which is a four-by-eight CNC router. We cut them up, and then we go ahead and we just transform it into a, like, whole series of situations. I'm not gonna say what's on this paper because it's not, it's not like in-depth as in what we do. Half of these were made last year from our previous students, some of them you've met last year from last recognition. And also, I would like to say thank you for everything you guys do, all the opportunities you guys give us. We are very much appreciative. Some students, some schools don't even have some of the stuff we have. For me to be able to say I have experience with a CNC router is crazy. That's something, like, I'm gonna be honest, I can't even say to most people. I walk into some colleges and they're even surprised that I have experience with that. So I would like to say thank you for everything you guys have done for us.
We'll leave them. Yeah, we'll make sure.
Great job, guys. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the student representative.
All right. Hello, board and community members. Olivia and I have some exciting news from the past couple months. This month, we were able to add in our student leader luncheon information, giving you guys an opportunity to hear opinions directly from the students. We also will be talking about some fun events that have happened recently. Getting right into it, BASH had their Wish Week. Wish Week is a student council event where BASH students enter their wishes, and some lucky students get their wishes granted. These wishes could be like Chick-fil-A nuggets, Wawa coffee, extra credit, anything not too crazy. Also, ROTC did participate in the Holiday Open House for the Boyertown Historical Society. ROTC goes around to multiple businesses in Boyertown to help out with their events. The students love to help out in their community. We would also like to congratulate everyone who helped out and put together the fall play Salem's Daughter. I went to see the show, and from the stage crew to the set helpers to the actors, everything was perfect. Great job to everyone involved. It was an amazing play. In order to fulfill our duties by providing the board with opinions and information directly from the students, one means we use is luncheons. These meetings include several students and Dr. Foley as an attendance over their lunch period. Lexi and I formulate a variety of questions and offer them in a discussion forum. This is a brief summary of our latest get-together at BASH on November 22nd of this year. In comparing current learning experience with the pre-pandemic learning, the students' responses were generally positive. Some felt we were getting back to normal. Finding recorded lectures being posted a benefit to making up missing work. I lost my spot. Others felt the urgency to get assignments completed were lacking, having too much flexibility and structure in class. Asking what areas students felt Boyertown Area School District excelled in, the counseling department was highlighted in their efforts to assist the preparation for graduation and beyond. The extracurricular offerings opporunities also academic and as well as athletics were also appreciated. One other topic we discussed was the required literature in BASD's curriculum. While acknowledging the value of the life lessons presented in the studies, the writing in specific social situations seemed outdated and difficult to relate to. Noting there are more contemporary authors that have the ability to present equally equal valuable content and more relatable storylines. Many of the contemporary authors address or write from the perspective of different ethnicities and/or other marginalized members/groups in our community. With volatile social environment, these perspectives are great concern to our students. They own the desire to learn and understand each other in an effort to break down the barriers causing separation. Respect given and received by students was our last topic of conversation. Respect to and from teachers and administrators was felt to be mutual. A desire to learn more about our security staff was expressed while acknowledging the significant effort they put forth in protecting us all. Respect from peers was another story altogether. It seemed to be situational, if not location-based. In the halls and public areas, generally less orderly, there was felt to be little to no mutual respect between students, rooted in appropriate behavior and talk being the rule. When in class or other more structural environments, the conversation and behavior seemed to hold more sensitivity for others. This being another example of mutual respect for teachers.
This being another example of mutual respect for teachers.
We want to thank you all for listening. We hope you have a great night.
Thanks, guys. Bond Advisor's presentation.
Brad, you can go ahead and get started.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I wanted to come back, report back to the board on the bond refinancing of the 2014 bonds that just recently took place. But before I do so, I do want to thank the board. I do want to thank the administration and the Fox Rothschild team for helping us, you know, getting the documents in place to be able to move and take action. This was discussed, if you, many of you may recall, in the middle of last year, but interest rates moved against us a little bit, so we kind of had to hit pause and wait for things to come back. And I want to thank Patty for, you know, a lot of phone calls saying, let's get started, let's, now we have to pause again. Market's moving against us. And she was extremely flexible and responsive as we kind of went through this process over about a six or six month or so process. I know I find myself behind other presentations that are a little bit more exciting, but this year, you know, this time, I think I have some good news for the board because it did pay off to the tune of $2.1 million of net savings over the life of the bond issue, which was a meaningful number. I think as last fall started, we were under a million. But as we got to the holidays, we didn't give Patty a break. We had to keep her working on this to get everything together and hit the market right after the first of the year, which we were able to do. Like I said, we got this, the savings up to net of $2.1 million over the life of the bond, which was a, was a real great achievement. Again, when only, I guess, early fall, we were, we were under a million. A couple of things I wanted to attribute this to, when I think of putting together a good financing plan, there's like basically three things that I like to think of. First is, you know, you have to, you know, have cooperative market conditions. That's obviously something that we can't control, but we can certainly make sure we're in a position and ready to take action when, that the conditions do improve, which is what we saw just over the holidays. And so we were ready to go right after the first of the year. The second is to have a good strategy and be prepared. That is, you know, understanding that the market, understanding the transaction. We knew that we were getting closer to the call date for the 2014 bonds, which makes, which made things a little bit easier for us to do a, you know, tax exempt fixed rate refunding, which is kind of a straight, plain vanilla financing. So we did have a strategy there. And the third part, you know, obviously, interest rates are a component, as I mentioned earlier. But to have a strong credit rating, much like a credit review, much like a credit score you might know of, also makes it a lot easier to get a lower interest rate and get a lot of attention from investors, of which Boyer Town did, we were able to get a lot of investor interest. In order to go through the credit review process, we have to send a lot of information to the rating agency and then we have to have an interview that Patty really runs the interview and does, does the, most of that interview during that, that usually about an hour long process. And in order to achieve a good rating, you know, we need that review to go well. And it really did go very, very well. I did want to call out Patty and say thank you for all your time, your flexibility, and really representing Boyer Town very exceptionally during that rating process because with that strong rating report, that helps, you know, us gather a lot of investor interest and get a little bit lower rate because, lower interest rate because, you know, the credit rating's so solid. The credit rating of the district's in the double A category, double A minus. The other thing that's important about Patty being able to help us secure that or really kind of secure that for the district is that we didn't need to get any bond insurance, which is a rap on the issue where, you know, if the district couldn't make a payment, an insurance company would step in. And we didn't need that because of the strong rating. So I'm pleased to report the $2.1 million of savings over the life of the bond, less interest you have to pay. And also wanted to thank, again, Patty for her flexibility, her tenaciousness through the rating process, the board for getting things in place so we could act, and as well as to the Fox Rothschild team for, for their help in this process. So with that, among the comments, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Yeah, is the $2.1 million after or close on this?
That's correct. Yeah, that, what I did is I, that's after costs and also because the payments are lower, the state reimburses you less on that, so they experience some savings because they're reimbursing on, on less dollars. So it's pure, it's pure local effort, budgetary savings to the district.
What is the balance on that bond, those bonds?
The, the balance, that we didn't, we refunded part of the bonds that had the most savings on them. Some of them we didn't refund. The bond itself, the new bond is $17,580,000 on the new bond. And we refunded about two-thirds of what was remaining on the 2014 bond, maybe a little bit more than that, looking at my papers. That's about how much is, that's what's going to be the new bond issue size, 17,580, 17,580,000.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any other questions or Patty, if there's anything that I missed that you think's important, I'd be happy to speak to that. But thanks again to everybody in the room's help to get to this point.
I don't think there's any additional questions. I do want to just thank PFM for all the efforts that they put in in watching the market and getting us to market when the interest rates were going in our favor. And thank you to everyone at Fox Rothschild who assisted with all the legal documents and being so responsive, especially during the holiday season.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person, but it's good to see everybody on the screen at least. Okay.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present the information on the BASD calendar for the 2324 school year. Hopefully, we're able to answer questions based upon the community survey that was put out about a week, well, actually about two weeks ago, but it ran for approximately a week. And we have a lot of good data points to share with you tonight. So the goal for tonight is to preview of the 2324 calendar. I will post that on the screen so everyone has an opportunity to look at it again. We also want to, you know, talk about the, the school board directors meeting that happened on January 10th and the review that we were requested to do to look at further depth of our calendar. And then we're also going to review the calendar survey results. So as you have seen the proposed calendar, this is the calendar as it existed on January 10th, approximately two weeks ago, with our start date on August 21st. And we gave you the rationale for that with respect to the BCTC starting on August 22nd and kind of the rationale for trying to connect our calendar and run it parallel with our BCTC calendar. So at the January 10th meeting, I'll try to just capture the information. Concerns were brought up about the proposed calendar and the start date on August 21st. A suggestion was made to create a survey to go out to our community. In this survey, we were tasked with giving the community two options. One was to start the calendar on August 21st of 2023 with an end date of May 31st. That would give us all our required days for the year. And that calendar really is very much aligned with the calendar start and end date of the current calendar that we are working in right now. The second option that was given in our survey was for a start date of the following Monday of August 28th with an end day of June 7th. So it really took the same calendar that we proposed, started it a week later and really ended it a week later in the summertime. The start and end date were the only two criteria that we were given or tasked to consider when we created the survey for our community. So on January 11th through January 17th, we pushed out a survey through Infinite Campus. It was a great opportunity to utilize our, our district warehousing platform for our data in that we were able to only send the survey out to the people who have students within the district because that would be the greatest impact. It wasn't a survey that we would send out through a Google form or something like that where we would have a very difficult time controlling the recipients of the survey. So in that survey, we had approximately 4,920 recipients of the survey. And you just think about families with multiple students and, and split households and things like that. That's how many people received the survey. Of the survey, 1,729 people responded. So only 35% of the people that actually received the survey actually responded. And I have the data point there as 3,191 people did not respond or approximately 65% of the people that received the survey did not respond. So the survey results are as follows. 1,161 people responded to the survey to start school on August 28th that they would prefer that, which was 67.6% of the actual recipients of the survey who actually responded. And 557 people responded to start school on August 21st, or 32.4% of the actual recipients of the survey who actually responded. Just as a reminder, we reviewed the BCTC Berks Career and Technology Center starting calendar, and they start on August 22nd. So we did a little more data digging. If we had to provide the opportunities for students with IEPs, that we would potentially be in violation of their IEPs to their least restrictive environment. So we looked at what it potentially would be for those students to still be able to participate at BCTC on August 22nd, which is actually the first day of BCTC. If you remember, August 21st was our first proposed school day. Dr. Foley certainly has a very overly zealous plan to get all the students everything they need on that first day, which would be August 21st, where kids cycle around to different center type areas within the high school. And they get textbooks, they get all kinds of things to get their first day acclimated. So the actual first day of August 22nd goes really well with BCTC. So to have our students with IEPs, which is approximately about 80 students, based upon this year's numbers, to attend BCTC, our bus service would have to kind of go all around on specialized routes to be able to get kids. We would have kids go to BASH and be taken to BCTC, but it would be a little bit of a daunting task for those days. We estimated the approximate cost for that to happen if we were able to provide that at approximately $10,000 for that first week. All the students would need to find their own means of transportation to BASH to catch their BCTC transportation for these four days if they did not have IEPs. So we would provide them the opportunity to attend BCTC, but they would have to find their own means of transportation to BASH. Another data point that we collected for Berks County Schools, 16 of the 18 Berks County Schools, that's excluding of Reading School District and Muhlenberg School District just because of their kind of unique populations and their access to the Career and Technology Centers. But 16, of the 16 schools, 12 of those 16 schools, or 75%, have a starting date of the week of August 21st. Some are on the 21st, some are on the 22nd, some are the 23rd. But 75% of our Berks County Schools actually start in that particular week. So our final point here is that our administrative recommendation is still to continue with the start date for August 21st based upon all the aforementioned areas and kind of align our calendar with what our calendar started from this particular school year. So we decided to bring this up for more discussion for the board so we can get to the conclusion and hopefully look to finalize our calendar.
Just for clarity, because, I'm sorry, I was taking notes. So for our students with IEPs, we would have to run bus routes for those students, correct? Is that, that's what you're saying?
Yes, we would have to run specialized routes that would not be part of their typical transportation routes to potentially give them the ability to have access if every one of those students wanted to access BCTC on those days. So we, we gave it as the, the numbers of this year of approximately 80 students if they all needed to have transportation.
And then the students who don't have IEPs would be given the option of transporting themselves to the high school and then taking our transportation to BCTC?
That, that is, that is correct. We would be looking to take them to back and forth to BASH because we would have transportation from there.
Okay, and then I don't know if you know this yet or you don't have to give me an exact date, but I'm just trying to figure out like a ballpark of when the keystones and the PSSAs take place?
Give me one second, I can give you the exact.
Just like a month.
The, the actual dates for PSA testing for, across the district would be April 22nd through May 10th of next year. Keystone exams, we have two times when we administer our Keystone exams. The first one would be around December 4th to December 15th. And the second one would be May 13th and May 24th.
And the keystones are now a graduation requirement, correct?
They're, they're part of a graduation requirement. There are different modes of which students can graduate, but that is the primary first look.
Right, so one of my concerns, because I, I was thinking about this and speaking with some persons, is that the week, if we tack a week on to the end of the year, it's not, yeah, there's no, there's no help for those kids that really need to get that extra instruction and pass those keystones because they're a graduation requirement.
There'd be one, one less week of instruction prior to those required assessments. That is correct.
Right, so it's concerning.
PSSAs and keystones.
PSSAs and keystones, yeah.
Yeah, AP and dual enrollment courses as well.
Oh, yeah, that makes, so the.
Because those are, those are, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Foley, those are controlled dates as well that we don't have any, any control over when those, those assessments are administered.
So we would be taking a week of instruction away from students where it, where it matters before those tests?
That, that would be correct.
Yeah.
I would say that we have, my, my global statement to that is that we have one less week of instruction prior to the required assessment dates.
Right, yeah, that was much more better. It was better than mine, yes. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
But if we move the date, we're naturally going to extend it into June, so we wouldn't be losing that week.
The tests are taken, the tests are scheduled, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Zawada, just to clarify that, and that's a great question. I mean, we're still having students attend school for the same amount of total days. That's not changing. But the required assessments that the state dictates that we administer at a particular time, when you, when you're going beyond that extra week to take it into June, we would actually have a week prior to that because we're starting earlier to have a week of, of instruction prior to the actual assessments. They're fixed dates, we can't control those dates. Unless there was a pandemic, which was a whole different conversation a couple of years ago. Yeah.
On, on our starting date, what was, what was this starting date last year for the BCTC? I don't.
I, I have it here. The first date of school for this calendar year that we're in right now was actually August 22nd. And the first BCTC date was August 23rd. So this calendar replicates that same weekly start. The calendar we're living in right now, it's actually the same week for the proposed calendar for the 2324 school year.
What about last year? Was it about the same time last year? Okay.
It's the same, it's the same starting week.
Yeah, I have a question though. I'm pretty confident, though, if we nixed a lot of those half-days, you would get that week back easily, correct?
Time of instruction, the actual time.
Mine was on the 20 days of half-days. If, I understand you can't push the dates around for the keystones and all that. But to me, all these half-days, if we did away with them because we didn't have that many before, and we need to go back to full instructions, exactly how much teaching time is done in elementary, middle school, and high school on these half-days? Because our children are not getting that learning. And if we're here for education, then they should be in school learning, not half-days. So exactly how much time are our children getting in education on those half-days?
Yeah, you, you're asking a great question. And I would say that in general that it's also very important that we help to support our teachers to be able to meet the needs of our kids. And that's what we're doing on those half-days. We're providing professional learning opportunities for our teachers to meet the needs of what the state is asking us to do. The upcoming school year, there are a lot of mandates that are coming down that we are trying diligently to find the time to help to provide the support to meet the needs of our teachers to teach our kids and provide the most effective education that they can.
But I'm back to the thing. How much education are our children getting on those half-days? We're here to educate our students. We're here to educate our students. Okay, right now, I think it's a hundred and eighty-seven days that our teachers are required. What happened to the one ninety-one that we used to have? If we put four more days of them on their calendar, we could probably take twelve days of half-days away. Our children should be first and foremost.
And I, and I certainly understand what you're saying, but I would also say to you that the reason we're making this choice to provide more opportunities for learning to happen is that we are looking to meet the needs of our kids. And more than ever, we are doing what we possibly can to possibly do that. All of the information that we're getting back down from the state, all of the requirements that are coming back from the state, all of the needs of our students that come to us on a daily basis, we have to be able to provide the opportunities to support our teachers, to support our kids. And, and while it seems like an obvious statement that in front of a teacher time is the most effective time, I agree with you, that's super important, but it's really important as well to kind of have a balance to provide support for our teachers to meet the needs of our kids. So I, I'm certainly not arguing with you, but I'm just trying to provide an alternative opinion to why we would add those days into our calendar and why we've proposed them.
But twenty days is too excessive, even if you go to. I have one more quick comment to this whole thing. You have middle school and high school who work on forty-five-minute schedule or whatever it is. So what are they down to? Are they down to twenty-five minutes? If that's the case, what are they learning? Because till they get to the room, you know, they've wasted five, ten minutes already.
So typically, what happens on our early dismissals, we, and honestly, with, with potential impending weather tomorrow, a late start, just saying that scenario, we have a modified schedule on those particular days, so that we provide the opportunities for our kids to see all of their instructors, to get whatever they might need to move forward, and that's, that's what happens. We try to provide as much support as we can on those particular days, whether it's an early dismissal or a late start.
Mr.?
Before I go, or, I saw that Mr. Ralph had her hand up. Did you have a comment? No, okay. I can, since I went already, I'll wait, I'll let Mary Ann go first, if that's okay, and then I'll go.
I didn't know whether you could see me or not. Mr. Stout, I just have a couple of questions. Concerning the half-days, because that definitely is a concern of mine as well. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but as a board member, last year I did vote for fifteen half-days. And, and I admit that that was a mistake on my part, to do that. I was uncomfortable with it then. The twenty half-days, I'm even more uncomfortable with, just so you know where I'm coming from. To qualify these half-days, I feel that as a board, we need to know exactly, is this academic education? What are the teacher, we, we need to have an idea of what the board is mandating for you to do. I think that's number one. Number two, you know, it's not unusual for professions. Education is one, medicine is another. Even in the world of finance, you have to do studies on your own. You do virtual meetings, which I think are great, I love virtual meetings. And so, to, to qualify taking time away from the student so that the teachers can meet together, I understand you like that togetherness, but you can get a lot done in other ways, too. And there are teachers, I would think on some of these subjects, unless you can prove it otherwise, they could probably do a lot of this independently. So, you know, many people are asked, I know for one, in the medical field, they have to get recertified all the time. They're taking these classes on their own time, they're not getting paid for it, it's on them. I don't want to, I don't want the teachers to be upset with it, but I also have to put the student first. So we have to find a place to come and, and meet in the center. We have to provide more time for our kids in class. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Just one, just one statement on that. I just wanted to say, just from the perspective, and I'm, I'm not going to have it off the top of my head, I apologize, Mrs. Torshia, but the mandated hours per PDE for required, and I'll call it seat time, we more than exceed what the mandated hours are based upon the proposed calendar. So I, I just want to put that out there from an elementary perspective and a secondary perspective. So just putting that data point out there.
Mandated seat time, you mean the time the kids are in the seats?
That's correct.
In front of the teacher?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay. I heard it wrong, because I'm old, getting old, so. I thought you said seat time, I'm like, I don't know what that means.
Seat.
Thank you. So a few things. I, I have a question just about the teacher's schedule, like the number of days. I don't know if that's like a union issue, like I don't know that we could just change that. I don't know how that works, like if it's contractual. Thank you. And then also the issue of saying to teachers, "Well, you have to do this professional learning on your off-hours." I would assume that that's probably also not going to work contractually. I don't know, but it sounds like it could be problematic. And then, the other thing is that I was, I was at a recent meeting at the high school where I was interacting with lots of teachers, and one of the things they were discussing was the impacts to them and the stressfulness of trying to juggle all of their responsibilities and the professional learnings and all of that. And, you know, I think we all, we all live in a high-stress world, so I think we can all identify on some level. But we also know that we have a teacher shortage, a teacher crisis, a teacher burnout crisis. And I, and I worry about the impacts of, of putting more stress on teachers who already have an incredibly difficult job and who we are entrusting the education, you know, of our most precious young persons, too. I'm, I don't love twenty half-days, I'm going to be honest, but when you talk about the mandates, I can understand why they're built into the calendar. If we could find a way to lessen them in the future, I would like to see that, because I do agree there are impacts to families, and it's difficult. But I think, you know, at the point we're at, we're kind of, people are, people need to get the calendar done. So that's all for me, I appreciate it, thank you.
We do appreciate the, the feedback. And the half-days was a concern of mine as well, when we were putting the calendar together. But we have to bring forward a calendar right now, and we know that we are in the process of negotiating, we'll be going into negotiating contract with our teachers. So the calendar can be adjusted, but we need to be bringing something forth so that people can start making plans for the following year. But we do appreciate the feedback, we, we understand and hear. And as a parent of children who are graduated in college bound and, and out, I can appreciate that, because it is a balance, but we also have jobs to do, and our teachers have jobs to do, and we, we need to be able to support them. And you are dead on. The challenges with getting teachers is huge right now. And, and maintaining our teachers and making sure that we are, you know, providing supports, but we know that we are here to educate our students. As far as what Mr. Stout was saying, and thank you, Mr. Stout, great job. Nine hundred hours is the amount of hours that an elementary student needs, and nine hundred and ninety hours is secondary. So it's a combination of days and hours, it's not just pure, straight, hundred and eighty days. We do have a hundred and eighty-three educational days in our calendar. Three are built in for snow days. So on some years, if we don't get any kind of weather, there are three additional days that could be received for educational purposes, so, thank you.
Mr. Stout, I do have two questions. And if you don't have the answer, you can get it to me whenever. One would be, what are we actually contractually supposed to give the teachers as far as those days are concerned? And the other one would be, what is actually mandated from the state? If you could just give me those numbers, if you don't know.
Mandated for.
For training, I'm sure, there's, there's, I'm sure there's some mandated stuff, you said mandated.
There's not a required amount of specific time, it's more about specific mandates coming down. Like, they won't say that, you know, teaching a literacy-based program requires ten hours of training. Although, for some of the mandated reporter training and things like that, those are specific amounts of time, which don't go away, they just add more required trainings. These are professional learning trainings that are required, new standards and things coming down from the state. There are new science standards coming very quickly that we have to get in front of, because there's a lot of modifications that happen based upon those requirements as well. So they're not, to your point, there are some specific things, like mandated reporter training, you probably had to go through some of those things in the past. Those are required allotments of time, but some of those other topics are not required amounts of time.
Okay, if you could just get back to me with the actual art.
We have it, yeah.
We, the contract is a hundred and eighty-seven days, but there are.
No, I meant exactly how many days are the teacher owed and.
Oh, and professional development?
Yes.
Okay. That, that we can certainly give you information. I thought your other question was with respects to.
Yeah, both, that and.
So we'll give it all to you at once, okay.
So all the half-days you have assigned out there actually have specific purposes, correct?
That, that we're working on the plan, trying to prioritize. And I'm going to give you a, for instance. So tomorrow is an early dismissal day, and there's, there's impending weather. And I'm certainly not giving any indication that tomorrow we will or will not be here. So please don't take this information. But there is a lot scheduled for our teachers, for our special education supports. There's a mandated survey that our special education teachers need to complete. There are specialized trainings that go for some of our special education staff. It's, it's a busy day. If we're not here tomorrow, and that doesn't happen, you kick the can down the road, and when do some of those things happen? So then you go to the next day, and it pushes it on that way. But, so to answer your question with a very nonspecific way, there are a lot of things we're working on, and we are prioritizing them based upon where we are with the, the specific requirements.
So this isn't just, we feel like we want to have twenty days, so we're going to put that in the schedule. You have defined specific educational reasons to put those twenty days in there, whether we like it or not. I mean, obviously, we don't like twenty half-days. If you don't put the twenty half-days in, what's, what's the outcome?
To, to just say in a nutshell, we, we met as a comprehensive planning team, and one of the topics that came up was what is the definition of vertical and horizontal alignment? Well, vertical alignment and horizontal alignment are two very unique concepts. Vertical alignment really goes along with thinking about how you plan for instruction, about what happens in a particular grade level, adding on to the next grade level. Where horizontal alignment talks about, you know, what are you doing across your grade level so that you have consistency? So we are blessed to have six elementary schools in this, in this district, X amount of teachers in a particular grade level. How are we making sure that instructionally, they're working on the same type of content to move forward and use best practice to move forward with those things? How do we work on making sure kindergarten teachers know what are happening in the first grade, what are happening in fifth grade, what are happening in the middle school while moving forward? So there's a lot of pieces that go along with the collaborative efforts of what that might look like.
So that we can make sure that when one, that the previous grade is actually getting the children ready for the following grade, is that correct?
That, that is absolutely correct, because I assure you, and I was one of those teachers at one time, that says, when did they ever teach this? And as soon as you go in to see the, the efforts that happened in the previous grade level to assure that that happened, you're like, oh, they do teach. No, they teach at three grade levels before that. So how that, how that follows through.
Is there any certification issues that we could run into if we don't have the half-days and get these, get these in-service days in?
There are mandated requirements that the state, and Dr. Frederickine spearheads a lot of those trainings that go along. Again, I go back to that mandated reporter training, like there are different things that we are required to do that we, we have absolutely no option of getting out of, and try to figure out the best way to put those in, in practice.
So in effect, we're, we're, we could affect our own teacher certifications. Do we not get these in-service days in? And you don't see another way to do it besides the half-days? I mean, that's my question.
I mean, in the most extreme analysis of that, I could say that that could be the case, depending on where required trainings were a part of a process.
Is there any other way besides the half-days that is practical?
You're asking great questions. So I would say to you, based upon Mrs. Torshia's point earlier about our required contractually obligated days that teachers work, when you are further along in your year and you've missed a day, like potentially tomorrow or things like that, you could potentially run into issues and need to find other ways for it to happen, because you can't, you can't not do some of the things.
So, so in your, like, in your, in your academic and professional opinion, this is the best way to go about it, is that not correct, Mr. Torshia?
I, we, we wouldn't have proposed a calendar based upon what's coming down next year that would not have done, and, and really, you know, I'm a parent. I, I'm, you know, most of you know me, I'm rooted in special education with respect to my background. I, I would do whatever I can to try to support our students the best that we can, but we also have to support our teachers to make sure we, we meet the requirements that are on, like, on tap.
Okay, so saying we're past the half-day issue, now we're back to start dates. Where, where are we going with that?
That's why my first slide, I think, said discussion.
Well, that's what we're discussing, go ahead.
Okay, a couple more questions. Our scores are down, our test scores are down, yet we want to do half-days. So please explain to me, on a half-day, kids get out eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty, I believe, what time do those teachers meet on those days?
They get their contractually obligated lunch, and then we're, we're on the move by, sometimes by noon-ish to a little afternoon at the secondary level, and by one o'clock on, at the elementary school level, depending on what time kids are truly, fully dismissed from school. Because as we dismiss at those particular times, as we've talked about dismissal times in our schools and transportation till all the kids are picked up and, and nobody's responsible to be watching kids anymore, it's, it's a little bit later, but it's around those approximate times that I shared with you.
And what time do they get done, then?
They get done at their, at their contractually obligated time, approximately three o'clock, and approximate for secondary, and then at the elementary school level, about three-thirty, three-forty-five, depending on the, the circumstances that are going along in those sessions. It's, it's, it's the same date, the day and end time that they would have if they had students.
So, other schools that can do it in six to ten days of half-days, they're having the same schedule we do. Same amount of information has to be shared. So if they can do it in six to ten, why can't we? And instead of doing twenty days, why don't we take a day away and give them a whole day where they could have eight hours or seven hours in school? And that could free up like three half-days if we did a whole day, which would benefit our students and their education, which is what we're supposed to be here for. I'm here for their education. So why not give them a whole day off and then take away three half-days?
Because then it wouldn't count as a student day, and it would count as a teacher day. And in order to bring back another student day, it would have to add additional teacher day, which would not be within the contractual amount of time that we could work within.
I'm, I'm sorry, but it's supposed to be about the education of our students.
Well, Rogers next.
Oh, I'm looking at May, the end of May. I mean, the twenty-seventh, we don't have school. And then your twenty-eighth, ninth, and thirtieth are all half-days. Are, are the teachers get in, getting instructional at the end of school? Those three half-days, actually, the half-day is the last day of school, too.
So the beginning of that week of half-days is when the high school is having their final exams. So the students are coming in for morning exams one day, and then afternoon exams the next day. Is that correct, Mr. Dr. Foley?
They're all, they're all scheduled in the morning.
Okay, but, but you're dividing up the day, between those two days? Okay, so those are, we also have to work with, within the function of the whole district. And then the other remaining three days, well, the last day is the last day of school. The other two days are professional development time that is being used to wrap up the end of the year. It's.
There, there are also talk about grade levels receiving students from other grade levels and collaboration between that vertical and horizontal alignment that I talked about earlier.
So just two quick comments. One is, I actually took a mandated reporter training today, and it was three hours. And as a professional, I was really paying attention, making sure I was getting all the information, because it's important, you know, protecting children. So I cannot imagine having to take another course right after that. It would be, I think, incred, it wouldn't be as effective. And I feel like, I, I think, you know, I'm here for the students, and student education is what we do. But I think we also have to remember that these trainings are to benefit students. They are to help develop our teachers and to make them more effective educators. So I, I'm, again, I'm not super comfortable with the twenty-days, but I think it's important time. And then my other comment was just that, talking about the scores, I, I believe our scores are. tracking upward, correct? We talked about that last meeting?
They are. I mean, there definitely was a decline across the state, across the nation with respect to test scores over the X amount, I'll say three years in general, but we're seeing an upward trend and seeing the amount of growth happening in a good way. Obviously, we would rather have our kids in a, in a higher, performing higher at those mandated assessments, but I'm going to also go back to the point that it's very important for us to be able to meet the needs of our kids where they are and sometimes for teachers to be able to connect with the student at a level that they're not used to a student potentially being at because there is a little more of a deficit. We are working diligently to try to provide those opportunities for teachers.
Right. And even, I know our IEP student scores are lagging a bit, but I do believe that administration is working to address that, as are the teachers.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I just, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate, again, the feedback on the half days and we will certainly go back and look at our half days and see how we can reevaluate where there might be days that are being utilized, you know, specifically for the high school. If it's a half day, you know, in May, which I know is specific for the high school, if we can look at how can, you know, how can we, you know, make some trade time that it would not be impacting the entire district? So we will go back and reevaluate the half days and, you know, if we can make adjustments, we will certainly make adjustments in the calendar that we bring forward. Is there anything else? I believe Mr. Zawada. Sorry, Mr. Zawada.
I believe you stated earlier, you don't know what yet, what subjects are going to be taught to the teachers? I mean, you said you're still working on it. Like, do you know exactly what's going to be taught on these 20 days?
We do have a preliminary plan based upon prioritizing what's coming down the road from PDE and some of those pieces. So there is a tentative look at a schedule of what that would look like for those particular days. The Office of Teaching and Learning truly works diligently to try to understand, evaluate, and determine where our district is to help move everyone forward.
So this is going to be controversial, but, so five school districts that are around us, the most being seven half days, those teachers won't be qualified or their contracts are that much different than ours? I can ask Mr. Saltanic that.
The question is, half days.
Half days in our, you negotiate most of the contracts in the area. Is our contract that much different than everybody else's on half days?
Our contract doesn't specifically address half days at all. Our contract addresses the length of the contract work year.
190.
What do I mean?
190, 187 versus what?
Yeah. 190 is about average in the region in terms of length of the contract work year. The decision to go half days is ultimately the decision of the district and just as the superintendent indicated, the incentive for the administration to use a half-day process is, it counts for the purposes of the 180 days of education required under state law. But there is nothing that mandates us using, you know, half days and there's nothing in the collective bargaining agreement that addresses that issue. So this is one of the few areas, calendar, that you have discretion as a district to address. The big issue is that you can't exceed the total number of days under your, the terms of your collective bargaining agreement.
Well, this is for Ms. Torsh. If we could have an example or possibly work both calendars with, as far as looking at it with 10 half days, I mean, 10 half days instead of the 20 and see if we can, see if it's possible with you. I'm not trying to ask you to jump hoops, but I'm just like, what I'm saying is, we're not, it's not like we're looking at two days. We're looking at triple of some of these schools and that's my concern and for the parents and the cost of the busing and that kind of stuff.
Anything else want to add to it? Treasury report.
We discussed the half days, but we didn't discuss the beginning and end dates yet. It didn't go anywhere.
None of it really ended anywhere.
Right. But I mean, we didn't, we didn't even go as to 21st or 28th, so what's?
We're not going to.
No, but the district needs to know what they're going to come back to us with, the 21st or the 28th. We didn't give them any direction.
Based upon Mr. Stout's presentation, we did say that we would be bringing forward the calendar that we presented from the beginning with the start date of August 21st in order to be inclusive of all the students. Yeah.
That's fine.
Now, we're going to need one for both then, based just off of.
Solely off of what we got back. Yes. What did we get back? What we got back from the, like, almost 2,000 people that voted?
We sent a survey with no context and said, pick a day. I'm not sure I could take, put any valid, anything valid to that survey. It doesn't matter. So there's, how many people didn't respond at all?
That's what I mean.
So you're putting, a survey went out that said, pick a day with no context and said, well, this day we get this if we check it, this day, this is what we get if we go this date. And the people sent back what you expect people to send back. I want this day. No context. The board's supposed to make the decision because we have the context of which day's best. Now, what I heard tonight was, I heard financial, educational, and legal reasons to go for the 21st, also logistical reasons to go for the 21st. I haven't heard anything presented for the 28th, except that, in fact, I haven't, except somebody wants it. So we haven't really had a discussion on the two dates. We had a discussion on half days.
Okay, I'll make my comment. We asked for the survey. We got the survey, okay? People who probably, and I've heard it from different people all over, what does it matter what we say because the administration's going to do whatever they want? And I said, that's not the attitude to take. I don't know what the content of the email stated or the survey stated. I think we should have heard exactly what was in there, but I'm trusting that you put it out there. What we did hear back from was people want the 28th. And if we didn't want the opinion, why didn't we as a board say, ask the parents? Parents responded that had a real concern and probably the ones that had the real concern are the ones who have schedules of, I think they were in some type of, what was that called?
Like daycare?
Daycare or?
Summer.
Summer camps, summer camps that would not be able to attend. Now, I'm sure they're putting money into these summer camps, they're not free, so they're going to lose there.
I don't think it was so much that as it was, they wouldn't have started yet, they're not starting yet.
Right. So, you know, we asked, we got the majority ruled and I was assuming that's what we were going to go with. And I'm sure Mr. Quigley, since he's in the audience tonight, would not run a bus for one student. I'm sure he would run a van for one student or two students because you can get several students on a van. So if they're in an area, you're going to run a van, you're not going to run a bus. So I'm questioning the $10,000 there, but, you know, why didn't we bother asking if we didn't want to take their advice?
Very good question.
So before I make my comment, I just want to ask, when is this going to come on to be voted on?
I would be bringing it forward at the next meeting, the February 14th meeting.
Okay. And then just to pee back off of Mr. Ruffey's comments, when we're looking at the data, 65% of people did not respond. So I don't, I don't know that we can say a majority of people in the district want the later start date. And also, just, I mean, I heard a lot of people say tonight, you know, we're here to educate kids and I agree 100%, right? That's our function. And when we talk about, again, those things like the PSAs and the Keystone and the AP and the DE tests and the kids who would be impacted by a week's worth of learning loss, it concerns me. I detest starting early. I really don't like it. But sometimes we have to do things that we don't like because they have positive outcomes, you know? So I'm a little bit, I don't think that this data shows us that, that the majority of people in the district want an early start date. That's not what it says to me. So that's, thank you.
So basically, the reason we're doing this early start date was for BCTC of 181 students affecting 5,500 other students.
Eighty.
No, we have 254 students who are currently enrolled at the Burksford Technology Center.
So 254. Probably they're juniors and seniors.
10th, 11th, and 12th graders.
10th, 11th, and 12th. But I'm talking about people that drive.
33 are getting.
33, okay. But we're still going something, we're talking about majority and minorities right now. And I just, like I said, you're looking at a significant percentage of people that it does affect compared to the ones that need it. So again, I brought this up with two other school districts and pretty much they said the students have to, and the ones that they do need, they supply the busing for.
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Zawada, and it's a sound argument. My question would be, how many high school students are impacted by a week's worth of learning loss before their Keystone exams, which are a graduation requirement? How many student, high school students are impacted by a week's worth of learning loss before those DE and those AP exams, which give them college credits? So that, I think that for me is, I understand the argument with the BCTC on both ends and I think there are valid points on both ends, but for me, ultimately, I think it lands at, when we, when I think about a work, a week's worth of learning loss before these tests that are graduation requirements, it makes me pause, so.
Okay, so I agree with you 100%, but if we eliminate the half days, say the 10, the students would have as much education as they need for those tests, okay? And plus, we cover. I'm just saying, there's some good school districts out there that score higher than us, start on the 28th and have less half days, significantly less half days. And they're just the same size, there's, some are smaller, two of them are bigger. So they make it happen. I'm not trying to make anybody jump through hoops, I'm just trying to see, there's a way that we can work together and get this satisfied for everybody in the district.
So let's be clear, this was all brought up because parents emailed late, that's why we're here. Right. You only saw two? More than two people talked about tonight.
But even if we had 10 emails, we have how many families in the district? 7,000 students?
I guess the question I ask is, how many people showed up to the previous meeting to complain about the date? None. None.
Nobody was here at the last meeting?
The only person I heard complaining was sitting two seats down from me. Still haven't heard a single educational, financial, logistic, or legal reason for the 28th. The only reason I've heard is we're affecting summer camp schedules. I would think, since we're the educational facility, that the summer camps would sort of try and align with us. I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Uptegrove, does the BCTC go ask all the summer camps around what, when they should start their programs? I mean, they.
I don't think so.
Yeah, they're in for 16 schools. Effectively, that's what we're saying here right now. This is ridiculous.
As far as getting rid of some of the half a days that we'd still have time for the children to learn before their tests and all, that would depend which days we're going to get rid of. So I don't agree with that because we need those days for learning. And it looks to me like a lot of them are towards the end of the year. Maybe not, maybe there's a couple in November, but I don't, I don't agree with that. And as far as the other schools, we're not the other schools. We're bored of 10.
You have eight days into December that are half days that could easily be moved to, you know, move us to full days and still have the time. So I don't, and it's not going to affect the tests. And having half days, I think, affect the kids more with tests because they're not getting, they're not learning as much.
But if we have overstressed teachers who haven't gotten enough professional development, that's affecting students too. So I mean, this is a complex issue and I understand where you're coming from, but I think we really need to take a pause and look at the full picture of how it's affecting, you know, even how that lack of professional development impacts teachers. I know as a parent, when I'm stressed, I snapped at my kid this morning and I felt horrible. You know what I mean? Like, it's, we're all humans and teachers are stressed and they're overburdened and we really, I think, need to like look at the full picture, which I know it's hard.
And I agree with you to a point, okay? I don't think we're hiring underqualified teachers. I think teachers, but what I'm saying is, again, these teachers are being taught on full days elsewhere, they're going into seminars and those seminars are being done, most of them are being done on Zooms because, you know, you take each grade and everything else. So I don't see how it cannot be, you know, moved. But then, hey, that's why we're having a discussion, okay? And that's, you know, there's people that have come out and we're concerned with the half days. I'm concerned with the amount of half days. So if we could set a goal, split in the difference, you know, and see what comes out, we asked to do the survey for the parents. I mean, we could sit there and say, well, okay, the president didn't get 50% of the vote because 50% of the country didn't vote for the president. So I can't base it on that, but these are the people that care. So we have to look at them, that 11, or that 17, what was it?
I actually didn't vote and I care very much.
Did you vote?
Wasn't able to get through infant and campus, so no. And I care very much, so much I'm sitting on this board.
Maybe it's time for some of us schools to step up and say to the BCTC to start their date later, to accommodate some of the schools. But also, years ago, we started after Labor Day. When were, Mr. Stout, do you remember when the testing was done then? Was it any different than it is now?
Yes.
It's always hovered around the same dates.
So even after we started on Labor Day, they were still being tested around the same date, so they didn't get all that teaching beforehand, so.
But, but also, when No Child Left Behind took over, my gosh, Mary Beth, I don't know how many years ago, I can't even remember, the stakes of the testing and the requirements for the state changed. So it was back when that was the case, it wasn't quite the same scenario. Dr. Foley just shared that the BCTC, the NOCTI test, the required career assessment that they're required to take is part of that timeline.
Correct.
That's why they start when they do.
It starts in February.
Yeah, it starts in February.
I'm not saying take anything away from, we should still get our students up there that are enrolled. I'm just saying about the other people that say they don't want it this early. And I'm sorry that Mr. Hemingway couldn't get through. Maybe that's the reason a lot of the numbers are lower. You know, maybe there was, you know, computer issue or internet issues with this survey.
I don't know. I'm looking at the survey and, you know, I know the 65% people didn't respond, but I guess I'm 65% didn't really care. So I'm still, I'm still looking at the fact that the 1,161 people, you know, made a decision to leave it alone and the 557 said they want it on, I mean, on the 21st, so.
1,161 people voted on the 28th. Yeah. I thought we were double, I wanted on the 28th. Twenty percent of people voted for the twenty-eighth.
Right.
Twenty percent. Anyone have anything meaningful to add before we move on? All right, treasure report.
The treasurer couldn't be with us this evening, but she did provide a report that I can read for everyone. Um, the highlights for November and December, delinquent tax collection was approximately twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars in November and sixty-six-thousand-fifty-five dollars in December. Earned income tax collection in December was seven-hundred-seventy-thousand-nine-hundred. Transfer taxes collected were ninety-nine-thousand in November and ninety-three-thousand in December. For state revenue, uh, the special ed subsidy was approximately six-hundred-sixty-five-thousand-four-hundred in November, the basic education subsidy was approximately two-million-four-hundred-thousand in December, and the Pizer's retirement subsidy was approximately two-million-three-hundred-thousand in December. Federal funds of two-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-three-hundred-four dollars were received in December, and as for expenditures, salaries and benefits remain the highest um expenditures, accounting for about sixty-seven percent of the monthly expenditures. The treasurer, um, she will be back next month to report.
I believe we need to make a motion um for the Board of School Directors to approve the treasurer's reports as presented for November and December twenty-twenty-two.
Nyman moves.
Hogan seconds. Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dioroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the superintendent's consent agenda, I am looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the separation and release agreement with professional employee number one-four-nine-three.
Nyman moves.
Hogan seconds.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dioroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I am looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the following overnight student trips as presented.
Nyman moves.
Hogan seconds.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dioroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the creation of a student activity count for the BASH Student Diversity Union Club.
Hogan moves.
Oh, sorry.
I was hoping that we would start getting more information on these clubs, and maybe we need to have a policy where they give us more information on them.
It's to know what it's all being used for.
Excuse me, Mrs. Dioroff.
We're not going back and forth.
Call for vote.
Just to answer Ms. Nyman's um question, it was, it should have been attached to the newsletter with respects to what the diversity, the Student Diversity uh Union was using the monies for, but it says the types of expenses to be incurred will be for supplies for decorating the showcase bulletin board, each month supplies for community service projects, offset field trips, and club T-shirts. I believe they were also looking to um purchase cords um for graduation as well.
And what kind of field trips?
It says here that um Student Diversity Union is a fun, active club committed to promoting awareness and appreciation of diverse cultures at BASH. One of our goals is to provide opportunities for BASH students to experience aspects of various cultures by participating in field trips and hosting programs that feature and highlight different cultures, holidays, and celebrations. Furthermore, Student Diversity Union would also like to implement engaged community service projects in an effort to give back to our community. So I'm I'm assuming that it's community-related field trips. That is my assumption and my interpretation.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman. Mrs. Scott. Mrs. Scott. Mr. Updegrove.
No.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
No.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dioroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, Act One Resolution, the Board of School Directors to adopt the Act One Resolution, thereby limiting the tax increase for the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year by no more than the index of five-point-zero percent.
Hogan moves.
Zawada seconds.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dioroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we are looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the memorandum of understanding between Boyertown Area School District and Boyertown Area Education Association regarding the delivery of virtual instruction during school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and over the term described in this document as presented.
Hogan moves.
Nyman second.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dioroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And next, I'll be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda as presented, but prior to that, I do want to um draw everyone's attention to the number of retirements that we have um on this agenda, and to um, you know, highlight the number of years that many of these teachers have um given to the school district. Uh, we have a teacher from New Hanover Upper Frederick with seventeen-point-five years. Um, we have a one, two, three teachers at Boyertown Elementary between uh the number of years of twenty-five, twenty-eight, or uh thirty and twenty-eight, and an Earl Elementary teacher um at twenty-eight years. So um there is a lot of great experience that is retiring at the end of this year. Uh, these will be huge shoes to fill. Um, just wanted to highlight, you know, and, you know, recognize this wonderful staff, their dedication to Boyertown, um, being in one school district is is amazing for all those years, so just really want to recognize them as a whole. Uh, Deborah Coates, Brenda Desco, Sally French, Tracy Gall, Doreen Hartman, Shelley Leibensberger, Lori Lutz, Patricia Linden, and Mary King O'Leary, and uh our support staff, Keith Height, um, who has been with us for sixteen-point-five years. Uh, along with recognizing those teachers who are retiring, um, I also wanted to um welcome and congratulate Dr. Matt Bergy, who will be moving um to the Assistant Principal Senior High position. Um, once we're done transitioning him, uh, he'll be moving up there around the twentieth of February, so congratulations, welcome to the high school. Um, and then I would be asking for the Board to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Hemingway motions.
Okay, um, so I just want to congratulate Dr. Bergy, and um to all of our retiring staff, thank you um for your dedication to the district. Uh, we all know it's it's hard to replace teachers literally, but it's um, you know, it's always, it's always a sad thing to lose people who've been part of the family for so long, so um, thank you, thank you for our, your years of dedication to the students and to the district. That's all for me.
Okay, um, I know some of these that have put the early retirement in, we don't always fill their positions, but I'm seeing they're all at elementary, so I'm assuming we're gonna replace all of them.
That is the plan, yes.
Um, okay, and um, something else, but I can't think of it, so, okay.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dioroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That completes my report.
Public comment period number two. Krista Collins. Bullying.
Um, I really just had more of a question for the Board, and I'm actually glad I did sign up to speak about it. I had put out some feelers to the community, and I didn't get a lot of like specific responses back that I was hoping I would, but it actually follows up with one of the the senior board representatives. She had talked about some discussion with the students and not feeling like mutual respect within the classrooms or out in the hallways amongst each other. Um, there's a lot of comments about bullying and things like that that go on within the Boyertown District. Um, I don't have any specific comments tonight, I was hoping to get them, I obviously would not share anybody's names specifically, but I'm pretty sure some of the board members are aware of it, I'm sure the other members of the community are aware of it, um, and I don't know if it's something that can be maybe added to some of your um, uh, the committee of the whole discussions, if you're gonna break out and do some things. I know, um, Mr. Panarello, you have, you know, how you're divvying things up as you kinda um go throughout this year, but I definitely think it's something that needs to be looked into, is the respect of the students to the other students. It does seem to be a problem, and I realize some things can't be done off of school property, but there's like kids that walk from the junior high, and like kids were like getting, um, I don't want to use the word beat up, but I know that like bookbags were taken and all their stuff was stolen, and like, you know, and I think sometimes parents don't really know who to talk to or what to say about it, and they obviously don't want to put a larger target on their kids back, and since my kids aren't in the district yet, I'm happy to put the target on my own back, but I definitely think it's something that we need to look into. That was all, thank you very much.
Donnie Savage, for behavior and transparency.
First, I wanted to say thanks to the student reps for sharing the survey results, they were some pretty great and thoughtful responses that we heard, um, and also uh congratulations to the district and all the work that went into getting the uh bond refinancing and saving us that money over the long term. Um, at the last board meeting, a board member who represents my region, Region Three, spoke about the costs of right-to-know requests. In that comment, he called out two of the people submitting most of the right-to-know requests, and said they were quote "just too lazy" to look up the information. Although I wasn't named, I have submitted several right-to-know requests, and so I took offense to this comment as well. I would like the Board to know how many of the ar- right-to-know requests come to be by sharing one typical example of my own. Um, our public comment guidelines state that if your comment contains a question, a member of administration will contact you to confirm your question and provide you information. So in a public comment, I requested the data referred to to back up the assertion that the higher tax increases are correlated with lower tax collection rates. I followed up after the meeting with a courtesy email by putting my question in writing, and I was told that this should be a right-to-know request. So I submitted a right-to-know request because that is what the district told me to do. I was not too lazy, that information did not exist anywhere publicly, and the bottom line is when the Board is perceived as being non-transparent, the public tends to ask more questions, and if they can't get those questions, they will find means to ask the questions, and this is a valid way to get answers to questions. Most of these questions have been asked and not answered, so I'm optimistic about seeing more transparency with this Board moving forward. Thank you.
John Eby.
Um, at the school board meeting on the tenth, I was named specifically by Mr. Zawada in his comments. Um, I was actually both confused and both confused by one of his comments and agreement with one of them. Mr. Zawada stated, "If people would just cut, use some common sense, most of the answers are right in our policy, they're just too lazy to look them up." Well, all my requests, like Mr. Savage's, have been for information, which policies are about governance, not about information, but I could be wrong. Perhaps Mr. Zawada knows which policy I might have looked up to see the CFO's tax collectability forecast calculations. Maybe there's a policy where you put in it what your class sizes are right now and what the projections are. If they are, there'd be some useful policies, so I'd be glad to know about it. Mr. Zawada stated that this, these open records requests cost approximately twenty-thousand dollars that could go to the students. Kind of agree with that, I, I want money to go to students. And just like Mr. Savage, I actually asked the administration publicly in my own public comments that just provide this information in public meetings, and just like Mr. Savage, they told me I had to file an open records request to get the information I was asking for, so clueless as to what I would have done otherwise. Additionally, Mr. Zawada himself raised concerns while his comments in meetings that he was potentially engaging, just potentially, engaging in violations of the Sunshine Act by suggesting he might have been discussing agency business with other agents outside of public meetings, and in addition, discussing agency business with politically motivated groups personally and via emails, which also are public records. So I have a suggestion, instead of naming and shaming members of the public who are just exercising their constitutionally protected rights, perhaps Mr. Zawada can encourage more transparency and fewer open records requests with a couple of following actions. We're in budget time. Mr. Zawada could ask the administration more detailed information about the impacts on students and programs of lost revenues caused by depleting our fund balance by one to two million dollars a year to balance our budgets. Lost revenues, he voted for. Probably, I'm willing to bet, those lost revenues from lost interest rates, et cetera, far exceed the twenty-thousand dollars open records costs, would also have the benefit of allowing him to make more informed decisions on resourcing our students. Mr. Zawada could himself be more transparent as to the degree he has discussed agency business with other agents in the public, letting us know, for example, exactly what it is he's asking parents to do.
Thirty seconds.
Asking parents to do regarding teachers' um lesson plans, or to the degree with he is engaged with a politically motivated parent that actually volunteered to draft our district's curriculum and library policy for us. I think the public should know these things without needing open records requests to find out. I hope Mr. Zawada does too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think it was a pretty good meeting tonight, although some people don't want to hear what parents had to say in discussion, so, um, thanking everybody that came out, especially that young lady who's in Horticulture, she was excellent. Um, we do have a five-year plan for our budget, and after Mr. Updegrove and I met with Mrs. Denacola and our head of uh Facilities, thank you. Um, we had a good discussion, and I did ask for a ten-year plan, so I think uh Scott is on that, I think Patty's on that, uh, they seem to be very much receptive to that, so that if something seven years down the road comes in, six years, we kinda have it in the budget already, which is a good road comes in six years, we kind of have it in the budget already, which is a good thing. So, thank you, and that's it.
Okay. Check my notes, sorry. Okay, so, thank you to Jenna. That was like really awesome, and I love seeing all the students. So also, thank you to the students that came out to give us our recognition gifts. They're wonderful. Thank you to the administration for recognizing us. Thank you to my fellow board members for the work you all do. It's, it's super important and impactful. Really quick, the BCIU, the last meeting was also board appreciation, and I had to join virtually, but I know Mrs. Torsia sent out the amazing artwork that our, our student, our students submitted. So I'm going to be getting a print when I get it. I'm gonna bring it in here so everyone can see it, because it's really very amazing. Thank you to Olivia and Lexi. You guys are always awesome. Thank you. What else? Oh, so the New York City Choir trip I went on, I just wanted to say again, it was so amazing, and I would, to Carnegie Hall, I would highly suggest to anyone in the future that gets the opportunity to go, to go. It was, I mean, I really don't have words for how wonderful they were, and our music department just continually impresses me, so, thank you to Mr. Brenner and to all the kids and all the parents. I mean, literally, the applause from BASH was like the loudest. It was just such an amazing day. And then, you know, thank you to Patty for all the work she did on the bond. It was great. So like, you know, to give Patty some recognition. I know it's not a glamorous job, but we appreciate it. And then just one more time, thank you to, to all my fellow board members, because I think we had a really productive meeting tonight and we were respectful to each other, and I really appreciate that. So that's all for me.
Okay, I noticed there's been some changes to the agenda recently. The disclaimer was pulled out, solicitors, the solicitors, their reports pulled out. I would just ask that Ms. Panarelo, at least, at least notify the board members prior to doing that, so we don't learn it at the first meeting we come to, if you could show that consideration. Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry, did you call on me? I can hardly hear you guys. Hello?
Yeah, your comment.
Okay, okay, fine. Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple things. I do appreciate the meeting today. I'm sorry I couldn't be there. I feel awful, but I wanted to clarify something that I said, just so it's not viewed differently. I do not like virtual meetings in this setting where it is elected officials, I believe we should be before the public. So just to clarify that, I do like virtual meetings for training purposes or just kind of if you're collaborating something together with a few people, just to clarify that. I congratulate all the students and did appreciate the students that are on the board here that came in and gave us their information. That's good to know. And, um... I'm sorry, I'm just gonna stop there.
Yeah, I'll just keep moving on, no comment.
Okay, I have several. I think we have a student by the name of Tara Friend, and I had to mention her tonight because she is taking on the, the opportunity to raise money for Leukemia and Lymphoma Society for blood cancer research, and she has a goal, I believe, of $50,000, God bless her. So if anybody has any spare change you want to send in her way, she'd be glad to have it. But I think it's amazing someone that age goes to that length to do something like that. That's one thing. Second thing is we're hearing a lot about our budget, and that bothers me, because I think we have a good CFO. Think she's doing an excellent job tonight, just proved it with the refinancing we did. And I just have a question for some of the people that are complaining about we're doing nothing on the budget and we're not doing what's right. I think, I have a question for those people. Were they around in 2014? So think about that. Thank you.
Basically, thank you, Olivia and Carly, for your information and coming out. I know it's, it's, but it's also fun learning what your fellow students think. Want to thank Jenny, she's amazing for what she's doing, and it's great, and she's got such a career goal set up that I hope she earns every one of them. To Lou and Eve and the rest of the classes for the gifts tonight, very much appreciated. And Lisa, thank you for sending an email to us about Carnegie Hall. Kept us, had some great pictures. So everybody have a nice night.
I don't have a comment.
Yes, Fred Endy had passed away earlier and did not have any recognition here, and I thought that would, we should have recognized him for all of his years of service here.
I want to congratulate Dr. Bergy, all retirees. Student board reps, she did a great job. That was like the most insightful one we've ever had. The student spotlight, that, that was amazing, and Amy's gonna get these flowers. And for the gift, it was awesome, so thank you.
Upcoming meetings, we have our next board meeting, Committee of the Whole will be February 14th. There could be a change of venue because it is the Valentine's holiday. It's tough to get people to want to come out like children, so we're rethinking about maybe we would, you know, give another time. But needless to say, February 14th is the Committee of the Whole meeting. Right now, it is scheduled for Boyertown Elementary School. That could be changed location to here, but we would still have the meeting on the 14th. But just giving you all a heads up, and then our next meeting after that is February 28th, which would be in this building.